Okay, hi everyone, welcome to the January 12th meeting of the zoning board of appeals. I'm gonna go ahead and get started. Before I get started, I'm gonna go ahead and make, take a roll call vote here. Mr. Faya.
Yeah.
Mr. Smith.
You're.
Mr. Kindermans.
Here.
And Mr. Swaim.
Here.
And Ms. A Chris Moore here. Alright, with that, why don't we just go ahead and get started? Starting with our seven o'clock quarry north road hearing, which as far as I understand for scheduling reasons is being continued until February 9th. So if I could have a motion.
And I think. Tom, you were.
I was on that matter.
But what you said, if it gets continued, there's an issue with the ninth? Where, no.
Uh, no.
Somebody's, or is it, oh.
Did they all, yeah, there was an issue.
I, I, yeah, yeah, but not this one. I'm, I'm recusing myself.
Oh, that's right. Okay, so it can be continued to seven o'clock. Is that correct, Haley? Or, no, seven fifteen?
You're.
Sorry about that. So that one is already. On the agenda for seven oh five.
Okay, we have something already.
That's right, yes.
Sorry, yes.
It's.
No five.
Seven oh five.
That's fine. So can I get a motion?
Yep, right, yeah, I'm happy to do it. Move that we continue the hearing for Quarry Road LLC for special permit. For planned residential development for six units and forty eight Y Pittsburgh Turnpike until our. February ninth meeting at seven oh five.
That's great to have a second.
Second.
Great, Mr. Swaim.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Right.
Is a first more I. Alright, uh, we seven oh, we have to wait till. Seven oh five. In those two minutes, can we approve the minutes? Yeah. Has everyone, did anyone have any comments? I had some comments I got to Haley, but if everyone's happy with the. December eighth minutes, we can go ahead and get that crossed off our agenda if someone wants to make a motion.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of our December eighth meeting. As amended by you.
Thank you. Have a second.
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Kindermans.
I.
Mr. Smith.
Right.
Ms. A Chris Moore, hi. And there we go. Seven oh four and what, like forty seconds? We had seven oh five yet? Since we're continuing it.
It's, it's seven oh five on my clock.
Fantastic. Alright, moving on, seven oh five. Conqueror Center for the Visual Arts also has requested a continuance. Is that scheduled for seven? Or seven ten?
Seven ten.
Seven ten on February ninth, if I could get a motion for that one.
I make a motion to continue the meeting on the Concord Central Center for the Visual Arts to our February ninth meeting at seven ten.
Great, second.
Second.
Mr. Kindermans.
I.
Mr. Swaim.
Yes.
Ms. A Chris Moore, hi. We are ahead of schedule, people. Elizabeth, is there anything we need to talk about while we have a few minutes?
No, but for, for. Based on the conversation the board had. With the Concord Academy application for thirty seven Lexington Road, the Center for Visual Arts, I am getting quotes to have an outside consultant. Review their parking analysis. So I just, I haven't received those quotes yet. But that is something that I'm. I'm doing for the board.
So is that something, once we get the quotes, we'll bring it up at the hearing and decide then, or are we just going ahead with it?
So it, it, there's, I mean, there's not much to. Discuss, we're required to take the lowest qualified bidder.
Okay.
So.
But there's no question, it's gonna be done.
If, if that is, it was my understanding from the, the last meeting that that is what the board. Requested for the next application that came in requesting relief for parking in Concord Center.
Correct, and I, I know I've discussed this with you, Elizabeth, but just for the other members of the board, given the sensitivity of this, of the parking on this one, I think to avoid what. You know, Jim and Robbie weren't there, but, or probably maybe you were there, for the Concord Academy discussion, just getting them. Our due diligence lined up ahead of time. To make sure that there's an outside parking study done. Tom and Theo, feel free to comment on that since we had, we talked about it at a Concord Academy, but I think it makes sense.
Yes, we, we talked about it at some length.
Yes.
Yes.
Right, it, it, it does make sense, but, and just, just an FYI, and I, I emailed that earlier today, I won't be there, I won't be available next. Next meeting on the night. So I'll miss this one.
Just when we're doing our due diligence, just based on our conversation now. Okay, that's fine, I still, I, I think that, Elizabeth, based on our last discussion, that you are correct in your understanding, so we will just wait until we get the bid and. Go ahead with that. See, we have two more minutes.
It's just amazing, when you're waiting for time, right, it goes really slow.
Yes, and just for people in the audience, I can't go any faster, I have to wait till this, till the legally notice time of seven ten, so that's why.
Let me ask a question, which I just was distracted, and I apologize. This, the study that you're getting bids for, Elizabeth, is for what project?
Um, this is for a thirty seven lock Lexington Road, the Concord Center for Visual Arts.
I'm already recused from that one, so. No wonder I wasn't paying attention.
Well, that worked out. Um, so Robbie and Tom, are you both gonna be at the next meeting, cause otherwise?
Yes, I will be.
Okay.
I need to catch up, came from the last meeting on that. Cause I missed December.
On. It was a continuance, we didn't hear anything.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Uh, so that's okay, right, Elizabeth? It'll be in Robbie and Tom.
Yes.
Um, great. We still have one more minute.
Well, if you're going by my clock, it's seven ten on my computer.
Well, let's go by your clock, and who knows what my clock is right on. So let's go ahead, seven ten Palm Realty LLC, who is here presenting? Do we have anyone?
Hi, my name's Joe Rogers, I'm here from GCA, GCHG Environmental, and I'm.
This is awesome, yeah, Beth Fishman, I'm here for the, as the owner.
So.
Great. Uh, Mr. Rogers, you'll be presenting?
Uh, I was here to answer questions. I wasn't prepared to present, but I could, I could discuss the project.
I think just a brief overview would be helpful.
Sure, yeah, so the, the properties at, at one sixty Adams Road, it's an existing barn, it's a horse facility. The whole project is. The edge of the barn, just off the edge of the barn, it extends into the edge of the floodplain, and so the, the project involves some, some intrusion into the floodplain. So the, the main emphasis of the work was to develop a plan that would address the, the flood compensation, floodplain compensation, so. There are three auxiliary structures that are in use right now that are kind of, that are, are going to be removed to provide compensation. And they, those three structures more than adequately made up for the amount of the new building. So we met with the Conservation Commission and were able to have that reviewed by the city engineer. To give a recommendation that we did meet the one to one ratio, and then he also reviewed it for the one point five to one ratio, which we also exceeded. So we're offering, you know, a, a, a bit more compensation than is required in order to, to do the addition on to the bar.
Great, specifically two point eight five to one ratio, if I'm getting that right. Um, and we did receive the recommendation from Elizabeth to approve this. Let me go ahead and ask the board members, are there any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. On the plot plan, the two items shown as shed. Are those the ones that are being eliminated?
Yes.
Okay, is there a third one, or just those two?
Uh, there should be three. What, I, on the plan that we've pre-provided to that Conservation Commission and engineer.
Yeah, actually Haley, can we bring that up? Yep, we can take a look at that.
There is another building that's on the, to my right hand, which would be whatever side, but on the right hand side, but it doesn't have any.
Any labeling?
Labeling, so that may be it, I don't.
Probably.
The, 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 the plan that's called post, proposed conditions plan, that's the plan you wanna. Pop, pop.
There you go, yeah, so it is, you're, you're right, that other, that third building isn't labeled on that plan that you have there, but that would, that is the third ship, the third building.
So those three come down, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And you can see the dashed, the darker dashed line is the edge of that floodplain, so we have that small intrusion into that area.
Just to be clear, they're, they're being removed from where they are, they're not, yeah, they're not necessarily being destroyed, I think that we're trying to see if they're salvageable, but they're, they're gonna be removed. Yeah.
Okay, I know that site pretty well, cause I live quite near it, and. Really, you don't see much of this at all. You don't see any of it to be speak of from Park Lane, and you don't see much of it from Adams Road. So the additions, I think, are gonna be fairly, you won't see them, interestingly enough, you tend to see the facility more from Elm Street. Out by Paparazzi, because that's a wide open field looking towards the project, so.
I noticed in the wintertime, in the wintertime, you see it, in the summer, you don't see it.
You're right, right, so anyway, I have no problem with this one.
Uh, great, any other comments from the board?
I'll just make one quick one, Elizabeth, because you said that we had the recommendation from Elizabeth, uh, just for avoiding confusion, there's a recommendation of Elizabeth to the planning board, and then a recommendation of the planning board to us, just for the record. Be clear, it's a plan.
Is that right, Elizabeth? I see the recommendation to Board of Appeals from, oh, oh, from the planning board, no, on behalf of the planning board, okay, I see what you're saying.
Yep.
From Elizabeth on behalf of the.
It was in fact the planning board. I thought there, thought it was very, I thought that was a very thorough analysis and well done, and I didn't, I also don't have any issues with it.
Okay, anything else from the board?
Not for me.
Okay, uh, let me go ahead and open up to public comment, if there is any public comment, if you could raise your hand virtually, that would be great. Uh, I can't see everyone, are we, I don't see anything. Okay.
Uh, yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah, this is Beth Fishman, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I will say, you know, I have been familiar with this property, I purchased it last spring, I've been familiar with the property for many years. We're keeping the same use, we're just improving it, just so you know, I appreciate your cooperation, we're just trying to improve it. And, and it's just been neglected for, you know, a lot, it's been thirty years old, and we're just, it's the same use, it's the same design, it's the same builder. That built the original Circle B Barnes is gonna do it, and they've gotten Joe Rogers involved in his, his company, and they all really know what they're doing, and, and it should be a very, it, it shouldn't really look any different from how it looks now.
Great, thank you. Um, so I can't remember if I closed public comment, but I'll do that anyway, and I agree with Jim, I thought it was a well thought out recommendation. I think people more knowledgeable than, than I am about this, including the engineering department, have recommend, have signed off on it, so I don't have any issues, so unless anyone else does. I guess one question, Elizabeth, have they already received the order of conditions, or does that still need to be a?
It's been received, yes.
Okay, so that wasn't, that condition prior to the site work, if that's just the planning board recommends that the condition, the first condition, the applicant shall receive an order of conditions, do we need that in there?
Um, well, it's receiving, I believe it says record as well. Doesn't it say?
Oh, yeah, and provide a copy of recorded, okay. So great, if someone wants to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the application of Palm Realty LLC for a special permit on the zoning bylaw, section seven point two and eleven point six. To construct a barn addition, which requires eight point nine three cubic yard filled within the floodplain conservancy district, and twenty five point forty three cubic yards of. Compensatory flood storage at one sixty Adams Road.
Great, second.
I'll second it, but do we wanna add to that motion that we're adopting the planning board report and the conditions that are set forth in there?
Yeah, let's do that.
I move.
Second, again.
Great, all in favor, Mr. Kindermans?
I.
Mr. Smith?
Right.
Ms. A Chris Moore, I, thank you very much, good, good luck with it.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Um, alright, seven fifteen. Ms. Vishlitsky, are you here?
Hi.
Um. Or, sorry, should've said doctor, probably, sorry about that.
I'm actually a social worker.
Oh, okay.
Private practice. And I, so my name is Tamara Vishlitsky, I live at thirty, three fifty Bedford Street. Um, I have a, my office is in a barn. Um, next to my house. And currently, I mean, I, I work for me, and currently I have three. Patients who show up here in, in actuality, everything else is virtual, you know, most of my work is virtually. And yet I feel like I want the option to have patients come in. Um, which is why I want to ask for a continuation of the special permit.
Okay, the, um, so there, there are no changes you're asking for to the special.
No, no, nothing.
Um, and Elizabeth or Paul, have there been any issues with this? Um, what was our, what was the term? Sorry, no, you said no, Paul?
Yeah, you can hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, no, there's been no issues, no complaints.
Okay, um, what was our term for the last one? How many, do we grant it for one year?
Just one year.
Okay, I have zero issues with this, it sounds good to me, I don't know if we wanna extend the, the length of the special permit this time.
I, yeah, yeah, I would like to extend the special permit.
Yeah, I remember that there were some neighbors that had some potential concerns, and that's why we did the first year, just as a short term, to make sure everything was okay, and it sounds like it is, so I think we can certainly do a longer term.
Okay, I'll open up to public comment to see, um, let me do that, let me open a public comment, if anyone has anything, if you could raise your hand, so to speak. I do not see anything, so I will close public comment. What do we do usually after one, would we do two, three?
Five.
Five, okay. Uh, that's fine with me.
Yeah, generally, you do one year, if there's issues or concerns, the board would do it for another year. Um, if, if there haven't been, and it's fairly minor home occupation, you go five, and then. Ones that have continued for five years, you have gone to ten, so.
Um, five sounds fine to me, um, so if there are no other questions, if someone would like to make a motion.
I'm happy to do this one, uh, okay, move that we grant a special permit to Tamara Vishlitsky for renewal of a special permit under zoning by long sections five point three point six point two, eleven point six, for a special home occupation. To operate a doctor's office at three fifty Bedford Street for a term of five years.
Second.
All in favor? Mr. Smith?
Right.
Mr. Kindermans?
I.
Ms. A Chris Moore, hi. So we'll see you maybe in five years, we'll see.
Thank, thank you so much.
Thanks, have a good night.
You too.
Not me.
Oh, who knows?
April, April thirtieth, folks.
Ah, geez.
No.
Well, that's a bummer, alright, well, on that note, let's, let's move on. Seven twenty, we're looking sixty one Black Duck Road, uh, I see, oop.
Hello.
There they are, hi.
Hi. Uh, for the, for, for the record, attorney Christopher Alvin Blatman Babrowski, Haverty and Silverstein, with me are also the homeowners applicants, Eric and Sally Anne, who are also showing up on the Zoom here. Uh, we are. We are here for a special permit. Uh, the applicants propose some modifications to their homes, to their home, they don't. Need a special permit other than a non-conforming deck, the renovations don't create any new non-conformities, they don't extend any non-conformities. Otherwise, they would be allowed to do this by right if it wasn't for their non-conforming deck, which is within the non-conforming setback. It provides a setback of nine point six feet when fifteen feet are required. The deck is a non-conforming structure, but it is a non-conforming structure, not what we usually see, when we see legal pre-existing non-conforming structures. We're usually talking about something that predates zoning, it was there before it became illegal, that's usually what we, what we're talking about when we're talking about non-conforming structures. This is a non-conforming structure because it existed for ten years without a notice of violation. There was an amendment to the zoning statute under forty eight section seven, I wanna say about six years, or six or seven years ago, that. Deems a structure that has been in existence for ten or more years without notice of violation. As a pre-existing non-conforming structure under forty eight section six. This structure has been around from what we can tell at least nineteen ninety six, and I provided a legal memorandum explaining the situation, and I attached. Some exhibits that prove that the deck has been around for a long time. It's no fault of the applicants that they bought, you know, a deck, bought a house that had, you know, a deck that was constructed without a permit. They purchased the property and the deck was already there, this is not something they constructed, and now they're benefiting from, when they purchased the property, the deck was there. So it should be treated by the board as if it was a deck that predated zoning, it's, it's the same legal analysis. That you would apply if the structure had been there since, you know, nineteen twelve, and it predated zoning, so it's treated the same way, that's how the law is set up. So what they're seeking to do is to convert that pre-existing non-conforming deck into a three season porch, so that they can have a reading room for their children. Uh, we'd be so lucky to have children who like to read, but they, they would like to, a, a three season porch that has a good view of their backyard. And they wanna have a little bit of a, a reading area, so the applicants can answer any questions you might have about their renovations, and, and the plans do that, but. What we're seeking is, is a special permit for that, for that modification to a home that has a non-conforming setback.
Okay, thank you, that's very helpful. I think before we get into the actual plan, let me just throw this out to all of you attorneys out there on the board. Thoughts on that legal analysis, and any, anyone have any issues with it, or are we? Theo, you can comment as well. Didn't mean to leave you out of that.
Yeah, it's forty eight section seven, it's something that, you know, doesn't typically get brought up too often, because building commissioners do what they're supposed to do, and when somebody creates a violation, they usually. Catch it, and that's, that's what happened here. My clients applied for a special permit, and Paul, during his job, flagged it and said. This deck is here, but I don't see any building permits for this deck.
Right. So Paul. Your, your legal memo was really clear, I just, and that's the thing, I, I don't have experience with this section, so it makes sense to me, but I'm just, wanna make sure that.
No, I agree with that, I agree with it, I've used that theory once in my practice.
See, that's good enough for me. Um, okay, all, all of that. Can we just take a look at the, and maybe just walk us through the actual porch outline, if you can pull that up, Haley? I think the biggest hurdle was just overcome, if we, uh, that's, we got the legal argument under control, then we can just take.
Do you want me to share my screen, or?
Haley, what's easier?
Okay.
Um, sure, you can share your screen, by all means.
Okay, Eric, you, you there, can you guide me through this?
I am, hopefully, the, there's not too much background noise. I'm in a, in a, on a business job, I'm in a hotel. So, um, yes, if you go to the, I think, the slide three. Slide three. Yeah, I, I guess it, it might be a little bit clearer in our, in our actual application, but. Basically, the, that right hand corner, right there, of that sunroom. Is the edge of the deck, and that's nine point six feet, and so we're basically building the sunroom on that existing footprint, and then adding that little. Triangle portion that is further away from the property line, so we're basically taking that existing deck and, and, you know, building, building that sunroom around it.
But, people on the board, would you like to see a plot plan, or is this, are there questions about the footprint here?
Yeah, well, I, um, it's. I.
That would be a little bit clearer right there.
Yeah, Theo, you got, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I've been looking here on my, on my second screen here as well, so, but the footprint of the deck is being enlarged, right, with a little triangle up front. Um, and then there is a new proposed deck in the back that's also in the setback, right?
So the existing, there are two existing decks, one in the back, one on the side, that one corner there, that's the closest point. To the, to the lot line, that's nine point six feet, if it's got, if, of course you go up to the left a little bit, and then more proposing to do is to do the sunroom in the kind of the green area. So the closest point is still, um, the nine foot six feet from the lot line, cause the lot line actually travels away from the house in the back.
Un, un, understood, but there is additional building in the setback.
That, that's correct, so the, so we're expanding the footprint, but we're not increasing the non-performing setback.
The, the, the dimension of it, right, yes, 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 yes. I just wanna make sure that. You know, the, the board. Picks, picks up on that, because that's, that's something that I, you know, I, I don't have any problems with this deck at all, but. It needs to non-conformly, as a distance, is not being.
Right.
Increased, but as a, a volume, as a total encroachment within the setback, that is increased.
Right.
You, just to make sure I've got this orientation, I appreciate that, Theo, and that's very helpful, too, is. The, where is the front of this house? It's there, right?
Yeah.
Just trying to make sure, uh, it was a little, the renderings just weren't as clear in terms of that. So I mean, it's also, it's sort of an, and we, we have certainly done in the past, things where somebody had. You know, a ten foot room or something that was nine and a half feet off of the lot line, and then they extended it further back of that same room, another. of that same room, another six or seven feet, but didn't, didn't, you know, it was still nine point six feet away, just exactly, so it just kind of followed the same line. And I think we have paid a lot of attention to the fact that from the front of the house and um, it didn't really give you a different appearance and that as long as neighbors on the sides were not unhappy, you know, with that continued run that those are tended to be looked at more favorably, I think, than if you're extending the, extending the non-conformity by adding more space and then it's all coming in the front of the house, so.
Yeah, how many feet are we talking about that it's being extended back? Approximately, just to get order of magnitude. Twenty.
Eric, do you know that calculation?
Uh, roughly speaking, I think um, the current deck is maybe ten or twelve feet wide. And you could see there for that, that, that long dimension is about seventeen and a half feet. But actually, the, the, the actual structure, the, there's going to be a deck in the back and then there's, the room is going to be about, probably looks like about you know, thirteen or fourteen feet. We're basically just connecting the, that exists, that, that, you know, deck on the, on the side to the, the deck on the back.
Yep, got it. And you're cutting that corner there, which makes it a little less, um, okay. Uh, any other questions from the board? All right, I'm going to go ahead and open a public comment. Anyone have any comments? I should note that we did get um, a letter of uh, support from one of your neighbors. Um, and I do not see anyone else commenting, so I am going to close public comment. Um, I agree with you, Jim. I, I am fine with this and like I said, they're cutting that corner a little bit, so they're not going as far as they actually could, I guess, to connect the back porch with that side porch. Um, so I don't have any issues with it. Um, Elizabeth, you're, and Paul, you're okay with the the legal reading and the, and all, everything we're saying? Okay.
Yeah, 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 I am, yeah.
Great. Uh, any other comments from the board? Can I get a motion?
Yeah, I'll take a shot. Uh, move that we grant a special permit to Eric and Sally Anne. Um, my screen is very small. Lynn, Lynn Patcher for a special, sorry if I missed the name. Special permit under zoning by law section seven point one point three and eleven point six to extend and non-conforming structure to allow construction of a three-season porch nine point six feet from side property line at sixty one Black Duck Road. Noting that um, the structure is um, larger than the existing deck, but um, does not, and it extends further to the rear, but does not um, does not increase the uh, non-conformity.
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Smith?
Hi.
Mr. Kindermans?
Hi.
Ms. A Chris Moore, hi. Thank you very much. Enjoy, and I will refuse to believe that your kids are not going to be watching some sort of screen in your reading area, but.
Don't have a TV, so, yeah, I'm here.
I know, mine would get their portable device somehow. More power to you if you avoid it. Um, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Um, okay, uh, we are at seven twenty-five Barbara Giddy Kohler. Hi. Um, so this is really just a follow-up from our last um, hearing where we had asked you to get together with your neighbors to resolve this um, sewer line. So if you want to give us a little update?
Yeah.
I think Haley also may have sent a, a document around so everybody has access to it, you know, so we did. Project was approved, but as you remember, the, there was a shared sewer that we had just kind of found out about and everybody wanted to know how we were going to move forward with that, so um, we have had this sewer line scoped, we know exactly where it is. Um, and my neighbors are all in agreement, we're gonna, you know, potentially line that pipe, come up with an easement. Um, and that kind of is the plan to move forward. It's, they, they've been terrific kind of working out. If you need them to come on the call, I can text them and get them to come on as well if you.
Um, I don't think, not at this moment, I think we're okay. Um, let me see any comments from the board, I mean, what we asked to be done was done, so.
Yeah, I, 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 I agree with that. I mean, we asked to, to have, come to a conclusion with the neighbors and, and that was done. And I think it's incredibly generous of you that you allow an easement across your property, so I applaud you for that.
Thank you. Um, any other comments from the board?
Do, do we just, do we need to uh, put that, all that in the permit then, that they will carry out this easement as it's set forth in this letter? Or substantially, I would, I don't want to hook them to, exactly, but.
Yeah, uh, so it's kind of, um, it's, it's a little bit challenging because it's a private sewer easement, um, it's um, but I think, so it, it's a little bit more challenging than you know, your regular projects where town, other divisions recommend conditions because of some impact. Um, but I do know after speaking with the water sewer superintendent um, that um, this sewer pipe, sewer line is um, much older than fifty years, so um, there is the town policy that it either be replaced or um, rehabbed, which would be, it could be lined. Um, so I do think that should be a condition. Um, the aspect about the easement, I think um, the board can include it in their decision that uh, the applicant has stated, um, you know, has a, you know, mutually agreed uh, that, that there will be an easement created regarding the shared sewer and um, and have that statement in the decision. Uh, but I'm, I'm reluctant to try and make it a condition since it is a you know, it is basically a private civil matter between those three property owners, but I, I, I think the um, the information that the applicant put in the email and what the property owners have agreed to, um, that that should be just, you know, in the report, so it is um, in the board's decision, so it at least is at least documented.
And then we have, then we would have a condition that the sewer be line, I mean, the sewer be lined by the time of the occupancy permit being granted, something like that.
Um, correct, there's a, there is a standard, we already have a standard condition regarding sewer lines that are older than fifty years.
Oh, good. You've written this before.
There's, there's quite a few of them out there.
I am, I am certain that is the case, you know.
Um, all right, let me uh, open to public comment. Again, I don't see any. So let me um, close uh, public comment, and yeah, this is exactly what we asked for, so I guess, I think that's a good point, Elizabeth, what you said, if we kind of, the reason, one of the reasons behind our decision, if we grant this is based on all these communications that were submitted to us between the neighbors. At least we'll have that in the record, and I am ready for a motion.
One, one quick question before that. I, I'm not sure that I participated in the original decision.
You didn't.
I don't think I did, so I, I guess I'd prefer to step aside for the purposes of the motion and the vote and let the people who did participate in it do it, since it's a follow-on.
Sounds good.
I'll make a motion to approve a special permit for Barbara Giddy Kohler under uh, the zoning by law section seven, two thirteen, seven one three and eleven six construct a four hundred and four square foot first floor addition on existing uh, twenty-four hundred fifty-three square foot non-conforming dwelling which exceeds the maximum floor area ratio by three hundred fifty-one square foot at two oh six the rose street with the condition that the uh, sewer uh, be lined. And uh, that.
Well, Theo, it may not, it may not be capable of being lined, um, it may be replaced. Um, so there is a um, standard condition for um, sewer lines that are over fifty years old.
With standard condition.
Okay.
And uh, the note in there that the uh, that an easement will be uh, sought. Something to that effect, or because we.
Or that we. That it's in the record that we received this information about.
Right, that it is, and will be uh, uh, will be recorded.
Can I get a second?
It's you, Thomas.
Tom, that's you.
Okay.
Great, all in favor, Mr. Kindermans?
Hi.
Mr. Swaim?
Hi.
Ms. A Chris Moore, aye. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, good luck.
Thank you.
And we are now at seven thirty. Julia Minor and John Caldwell.
Hi.
Hi.
Thanks for being here again.
So again, this is a follow-on from our last meeting.
Yes, yes, this is a continuation.
So I saw that there was an updated um, calculation on the, on our in our forms, Elizabeth, I, where was that? I didn't understand where exactly that had come from or why that was there, why that calculation was done.
Um, I'll, I'll let Paul answer that, since he's the one who did it.
Yeah, there was some concerns uh, from the neighbors about the uh, ADU being over one thousand square feet. So I and Gary Smith, the other inspector, went down and did some measurements and uh, there was a slight difference in Julia's calculation than we got, so she, she rectified it and uh, did some, did some work to rectify that to, to make it under uh, one thousand feet.
Okay, so now the total requested is?
It's nine ninety-three, it's, it's a difference of four feet.
Now that's helpful. Um, I don't know, uh, since Jim and Rob, we weren't here last time, but um, let me start with the board members. Tom, I know you had, had wanted to continue.
Yeah, I, I think I had agreed, pardon me, I'd agreed to make a review of the building file, which I did. And as a pure side note, the first thing that was in the file indicated that Roger Swaim had lived in that house at one point. And for those of you who are familiar with the law of real estate, Roger Swaim was a senior lawyer at Hall and Door and wrote a major book on real estate law, so I'm not sure he was one of my ancestors, but very interesting. As a pure side note, he and his wife invited me to come over with my wife at one time to have tea. So at some point, as a young, probably three years out of law school, I enjoyed the company of Mr. Roger Swaim's wife. Uh, on a uh, uh, out of the file, there were, have been a number of activities on this property. And I just bring two of them to the attention of the board because I think they uh, speak in favor of granting the project, uh, or the application. The first is that uh, in April of nine, of uh, twenty twenty, the HDC did grant a certificate of appropriateness to construct an additional three-car garage with a mudroom. Uh, renovate the existing buildings and freestanding garage foundation. So that the building that, at least from the HDC viewpoint, that is shown on some of the documents we've seen, was approved. And then in September of that year, on or about the September the third, uh, the two-story addition uh, was approved. Uh, and that it could include living space, mudroom, three dormers uh, et cetera, so that as of the close of business in uh, 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 twenty twenty, that building that is now there had received quite a numbers of approval. So I then looked at what we need to do to allow a, and I've talked to um, uh, the building, Paul, I talked to Paul for a minute. And to grant the ADU under four two two two, I went down through the conditions that need to be met. And so it appears to me that if you want to have an ADU, you can grant one if the area meets the code, here it does. We have the, the norm is seven hundred and fifty square feet, but we have the authority to go up to a thousand. And it's just pointed out, uh, it's less than a thousand, so that we can do. Uh, it's not more than one such unit on the lot, that is correct, there isn't. Uh, it, uh, the, the owners need to say, the, the owners of the property need to continue to occupy the, the bill, one of the buildings, and they are doing that. Uh, we've seen the dimensions floor plans, uh, there won't be any occupancy allowed before a building permit. The setbacks do meet code. Uh, there is a place for one parking space. Um, the, they would not be permitted to sell separately under the, under the code. The height is in conformance with code. And so it appears to me that we can grant relief from seven hundred and fifty square foot up to a thousand. And I believe they're asking for approximately nine ninety-three point six four, uh, and we can also grant relief from the required setbacks, but in this case, no relief is required. Now, I'm mindful of the neighbor's letter who was concerned and did not wish for this permit to be granted. It strikes me that the concerns that that person raised are probably inappropriate as applied to this application. And the reason for that is, as I read the letter, they were worried about a renter living in that unit. Uh, too much light, didn't mention noise, but light, et cetera. And as currently existing, even family members could live in that unit. Uh, and you would have the same issue, so I, I think it's a little late, unfortunately, had that the neighbor had been concerned about it, they might have wanted to comment, uh, when the permit was granted for the additional unit. Uh, so, from my perspective, I believe the application is in order and I would recommend that we approve.
Thank you, that was great. Um, thanks for doing that. Um, let me, Theo, did you have anything else? Any other questions or?
Um, uh, no, I, I, I think what the, what Tom just did was pretty darn thorough. Uh, so that uh, that was, that was nice, but um, yeah, I, I just have from the beginning struggle with, you know, getting an, getting approval af- giving an approval after something is already built. Um, you know, it's, it's, that, that, that kind of doesn't sit well, and then if you look uh, and that, that's where I might differ from Tom, where he said, well, maybe should have uh, commented earlier. All the plans that were done uh, before, it was all, always called out as a garage. Granted, the floor plans showed a unit on top of the garage. Um, and if you had looked at the plan, you would have seen that, but it, it just was always referred to as, we want to be building a, a, a three-car garage. Um, and that, I can see that the neighbors just, yeah, didn't, didn't thought that, hey, it's just a garage, what, how bad can that be? Um, but, you know, the, the floor plans were always there, so, that's.
I mean, I, I don't disagree with you in that, I mean, it's uh, it's a struggle when someone does something they're not supposed to and then ask for forgiveness afterwards, but it, the all, the other point of this is, at this point, what's the pragmatic approach that we take? And what would be accomplished by not approving this at the moment?
No, I, I, I hear you. If you were not to approve this, then uh, the applicant could just slice off, you know, what's it? About two hundred uh, square foot uh, out of that, uh, out of uh, out of the addition and, you know, it'll, it'll just be a smaller addition and a smaller uh, this, a smaller unit. But it still has the same effect on the neighbors, so.
Um, I'd like to.
Go ahead.
May I speak to um, this perception of, that we tried to sneak something by or tried to do something that wasn't on the up and up, i- it's, it's just not true. Um, when we designed this, it was early twenty twenty. And I didn't think that we could even do a legal ADU, um, the law hadn't changed. Um, we, I, I did want, my, my girls were living with us, it was during COVID. We had four adults in this little three-bedroom cape. And it just seemed like, from what I'd read, that this was a good way. a good way of of expanding our house to do a separate apartment. So I wasn't trying to and I I apologize for not talking to the neighbors at the time, but we did go through all the right you know, steps with the HDC and and getting our permit and everything. And it wasn't until I talked with a building official who was here while the building was being framed that I understood that we could apply for the ADU. So our motives have not been trying to pull the wool over anybody's eyes. We've just been it's it's a design is a process. And in my forty years of designing, it it just takes sometimes step by step. It's not something clear at the very beginning that happens that, you know, you just have all your ducks in a row. It it's it's an evolution. So just wanted to say that I I I'm sorry about the perception, but I think we've done what the town wanted us to do all along.
Thank you. Yeah, I I think in in my opinion, what we heard from the neighbors last time was there was a certain amount of distrust where, I mean, I I don't, we're not a court of deciding, you know, what motives and everything were. There was a certain amount of distrust. And as a board, we went out and Tom looked at the building record, talked to the building inspector, the building inspector went out and measured. And I am confident now that everything is meets and and is meets all the requirements to grant this. So I think at this point, to not grant it, just based on the, like you're saying, perception, I mean, it's it's a little difficult. We asked, we wanted to go back and just double check that it was all on the up and up, you know, and we're there. And I I don't think it's a valid reason to not grant it, Theo, I think.
Oh, no, no, I I I agree. I told I totally agree, but there was a bit of yeah, whether it was distrust and maybe it was a bit of clumsiness by the applicant.
Right, which is why we're here again.
Design process. And that's 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 fine. And I can I can I can see that. I can see that. And it's, you know, as I said, you know, it just said garage on the applications. But if you look at that same application had also all the floor plans in it, there was always going to be a habitable space above the garage with a bathroom, etc. So it was called a garage, but it but it's like, you know, and and I think that's is what where the neighbors and they don't, yeah, where the neighbors got a bit confused, maybe that, you know, that they looked at the title and didn't look at the content.
And and I'm not trying to undermine what the neighbors have said, but this is exactly why this is a two hearing application and not a one hearing application. Because we we heard what we heard, we went back and we asked for additional things to be done. I think that punishment fits the crime in this sense, if you want to use that phrase. I don't want to use that phrase, but I did. So
I know we want we wanted to make sure and I and I and again, I I thank Tom for his thorough review here and his synopsis.
Yeah. Any other comments from the board? All right, I'm going to go ahead and open up to public comment. Anne Elton has had her hand up, so let's start with her.
Hi there, it's Anne Elton. I'm at four fifteen Lowell Road. And I appreciate this entire conversation and I appreciate the evolution of both the boards' kind of observation of this and the miners' process. I do think kind of to some of Theo's points, it's not it was described as a garage, a three car garage with a mudroom with with living space. And so even looking at the plans, to me, living space for family is really different than living space for a rentable unit. And so I, even with a look at the floor plans, I think it's just a really different mindset to be in when there's nothing in any application from the building permit. And, you know, I'm not even sure if on an HDC or an NRC or any of the other people who've, you know, rightfully had to approve it, you know, they look at these things through their own lens for their own purposes. So I'm not sure if it's customary for in an HDC application, if you would specify even that it's a rentable unit, you know, they're looking at things, you know, on the outside and the light fixtures and things like that. So I guess I don't put a lot of weight on the ADU argument into the HDC application or the NRC or the other bodies that have looked at this. I kind of look at the building permit and it was permitted as a living space with, you know, no zoning permit associated, you know. It was, it didn't even mark that it was in the historic district. I just think that, like, the it gets really complicated when there are no rules when you apply for a building permit. And then or there are rules when you apply for a building, but but if you just build it and then permit it. I don't think it's great in this case in particular, but I also don't think it's great precedent. And at the very least, I think it's something interesting for all of our town bodies to look at to kind of tighten up who's looking at what, when, and who's relying on whose approvals for, you know, justification.
Thank you. I'll take other comments and then we can respond as a board. The Confrees.
Hi, Tony and Nancy Confre were three eighty-three Lowell Road, the Butters on the other side. And I I mean, I I guess just to build on what Anne has said, where I I guess I would ask the the board, I'm just trying to want trying to understand how zoning is meant to work in town. Like, i- if at this point we decided to build a thousand square foot ADU at the back of our house and ask for permission, would that just be granted automatically? Like, what what would, you you know, what what how should this? How should this have worked? And, you know, I I think, you know, Theo, I I appreciate Thomas's input in we ourselves have been in front of the Historic District Commission many times for some lighting and other things, and and I really appreciate how detail focused they are. And so we kind of looked at this as a garage and assumed that it was going to be reasonably, you know, scoped and assume that the the town bodies and processes were going to kind of look after this. And and now we have a very significant sized building overlooking the back of our house. And is is that just fair game and and reasonable for residents of Concord?
So let me add, Elizabeth, this ADU, I mean, I do want to respond to this a little bit. We're, oh, yeah, the ADU section was put in in twenty twenty, right? I mean, so the answer to your question is kind of yes, the town decided that they wanted to have the ability for people to build accessory dwelling units. And this was, I mean, Elizabeth, you can talk more to the reasoning behind it. But it's not. So yes, if you wanted to apply for one of these, if you met all the the requirements,
Right, sure.
If you had, you would have to come before us if you went over a certain size, which is what's happening here. Or you wouldn't go over that size and you, yes, you could do it. And that was a policy decision made by the town, townspeople. Elizabeth, do you want to speak to that at all about wanting to have more inclusive units or the building user property differently? I'm going to let Elizabeth talk for a second because I think she'll be able to clarify it.
I I have, I have I don't have much more to add to that. I mean, the ADU bylaw was passed in twenty twenty. It was a direct result of what came out of the town's comprehensive long range plan and an action item in that plan to allow property owners the ability to create ADU, you know, AD, small ADUs, allow them the ability to rent them so that they can, you know, offset if they needed expenses or live in an ADU and rent out the house. But specifically, especially the, you know, properties near town center to create, you know, additional smaller dwelling units in the community.
But so in this case, where we're going over the seven hundred and fifty and we're asking for the extension or they're asking for the extension to the thousand. And you have neighbors who are being impinged upon by this. And wouldn't that be a consideration as to whether to go over the seven hundred and fifty limit? Like, it seems like why not just set the limit at a thousand if there's no criteria that are going to impact, except for the fact that it fits within a thousand?
You're right. And that's why, I mean, that's why we're having this discussion. I mean, I think I think we can, we can get to the discussion of the square footage where I would like to return to that a little bit when we get back to talking to the board. But there's some of these threshold items, I would call them, that, you know, couldn't they have the ADU at all? Like, and it goes into the practicality of, so we say, yeah, you know what? We don't like, this is what I'd asked Theo earlier, we don't like this. We're not going to prove it. So then they knock a couple hundred square feet off. Is is that? Do we want that? Is it worth it? I mean, you you there's, you know, unintended consequences of both things here. The concerns with the neighbors, with the rent, with having a renter, is it, I think, is out of our hands, really. I mean, that was a policy decision put in prior this that people wanted to have these units available. The question about lighting and things like that, that may be somewhere where we can try to do something as a board here to try to get everyone to work together. And to me, that would be a fair concession to say, all right, you know, we will allow this, but listen to your neighbors who say they want, oh, you, Tom, I think you had brought up, who had brought up blinds last time or something?
I'd love to talk to speak to that because
Yes, go ahead.
The last meeting, we I I realized that the light bulb, it's a new LED light bulb that's clear. And even though it was a forty watt light bulb, it's very intense when you look at it from far away, that the filament is really bright. We changed that to twenty-five watts. And I think we've only had that, the Confrees did complain because we left it on overnight one time and we haven't done that since. So I think twenty-five watts is is pretty, that's what the HGC recommends when you don't have some kind of you know, clouded glass. I don't know why I'm saying not.
So, yeah.
So there's that. And then also, we I've ordered curtains and I'm sorry that all that time that we had during the kitchen renovation, we were up there with our microwave and our little sink. We didn't have curtains and and, you know, but that is all going to be changed. So
Yeah. And so to you, to this point.
One, one other thing, too, I'd just like to say is that the
Yes, go ahead.
Window sills are at four feet. So when you're sitting down in front of the window, you all you see is a little bit of the rooftop in the sky. So even though it looks like we're looking down on somebody's property, it really, they're they're barn windows, they're up high. So and there's a table in front of one window and a bed head in front of the other, the the head of the bed in front of the other. So it's not like somebody's going to be standing at the window looking down. You can't even get to the window. So I know that.
Anyway. Yeah, all right. Let me, so let me keep going with this. The the point is that there are things that can be done by right. And if if you wanted to build something by right, we'd have no say it for as long as you're beating all the regulations, this board has no say in it. Now we're in a situation where because of the size, we do have a say in it. Personally, and it sounds like the other board members agree with me, I don't think that that's a reason to deny it just because what's happened in the past. But as I'm saying, and, you know, there might be, you know, this, I hope brings some sort of agreement between you about something that might make the situation better. It won't get rid of the ability to rent. We 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 don't have that, you know. So did that answer your question at all? Long, but.
You. Yeah, I mean, I guess, yeah, we're wondering what kind of remediation is is possible with the, yeah.
All right.
So there's a table
Okay.
at the window, but if you're going to rent the place out, you're not going to, you know, someone contains a light bulb. There are
Correct. And there's only a certain limit that we can put on people, you know, in their private houses, too, because it goes the other way to what what are we going to put on your house, you know, so. So let 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 me finish taking public comment. I'd like to get back to kind of the board discussing what they think, how we can kind of get people a little bit more together on this. But I I think we understand. Miss Elton, I'm happy to take another comment if it's something that hasn't been said, because then I'd like to get back to the
I I just before I lose the the floor, I would just point out, I mean, this is ninety-nine point six percent of the maximum size possible allowable for this whole thing. So the miners, if if they hadn't planned it, certainly got very lucky to just come in point zero point four percent below the maximum allowable size.
We didn't cheat, Tony.
Okay, all right. I don't want to get into back and forth between you. So let's let's stop. Miss Elton, if you want to go ahead and say your comment.
I just really, I I guess I just really don't understand how you, in a building permit, can apply for one thing and end up with another and have that be okay.
That's not exactly what happened. Yeah, go ahead, Theo.
Yeah, I I I I think they applied for habitable space that has a bedroom and a kitchen and a bathroom. And that's fine. They 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 can build that. That's what the building permit said. What really what they're now asking us is not as much on the on on what is being constructed, but what the uses, they they asking us, like, you know, can we, are we allowed to rent this space? You know, they, as as the applicant just said, you know, the daughters, I think you you had and kids, they they could just both be living there and and it just not rented out, but they, the law allows that, well, it's now a separate unit. And and strangers can now live in there. And the applicant can collect rent from them instead of their daughters living there. That really is the only the only difference.
But procedurally, I think as a neighbor, I might have offered input at different points in time if it was characterized as something other than living space. And I'm not sure at what point it's customary for building permits to include things like kitchens or kitchenettes or ADU intentions or an apartment. But I think it also, by doing it this way, intentionally or not intentionally, I completely understand, it did steal the opportunity from a Butters from responding in a way that we might have if we had known that it would be a rentable unit.
Maybe, but they're also, you know, you responding now and and this is probably where you would have had to respond originally.
Could have responded along the HGC or other
I don't think that they are looking at
The original burn building permit. We didn't have a chance.
No, you 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 don't know, but nobody has a, if the if you filed for a billing permit, nobody has the the opportunity to to comment on that because you file for billing permit and if meets all the the regulations, then you get a building permit.
I think you see the circularity. If it had articulated what it was going to be, it would have been heard at that point.
All right. I know, I I I think
Right, right.
I I disagree with you, but I understand what you're saying. And
I I do, I do want to, yeah, I do want to make on this point, one further down the Laurel Road. I remember, maybe now a year ago, where there was a, we approved an additional dwell, an ADU in a in a home that had been there forever. And I I don't know the exact address, but, you know, it's been there forever and family members have been living in there. And now they were applying for an for an ADU so that they could rent it out. And so it's not all that dissimilar from from what we have in 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 front of us today. It's just, you know, the the timeframe is a little bit different. And I and I can see the applicant where, you know, all of a sudden, it's like, well, we have the square footage, it's habitable space, and now we can rent it out. Changing use.
Okay, I think everything is a little, it's on the table here. Are is there anyone else who has a comment who hasn't spoken? All right, let me
Can I just add one thing, one thing, which is
Can you say your name and address again?
Confre, three eighty-three Lowell Road. The the in as part of this project, they did take out a lot of vegetation along the fence that used to block us from them. Another mitigation to consider is possibly putting back, so we have tried on our side. It hasn't been very successful. Just because it's a little sparse still, but if they also had vegetation that was along the lines of the Arbreviti that go from the basically the part of their halfway through their barn up to the road, if something like that was extended further, that would be, that's a possible mitigation. um, that would be, that's a possible mitigation.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment. Um, let me talk to the board. Tom, what are your thoughts after hearing all of this?
Uh, it hasn't changed my view because what we're talking about, from my perspective, is an increase of approximately two hundred square feet, the seven fifty to the nine fifty now, so two hundred and seventy-five square feet or so. The building, had there been no application to increase over the seven fifty, we wouldn't be here. And so the building was properly permitted. I think there's some possibly misunderstanding on some of the, the neighbors about understanding the process, and, and I think Theo, Theo was quite correct in pointing out, and we've all probably experienced this that we see a building going up, and we say, gosh, I didn't know that. And I don't like that. Well, they have a building permit, they complied with all the standards required in the zoning code, setbacks, heights, whatever, and therefore you don't get notice. And that's the way things happen, and so in some respects, that's happened here to, and even if they had purely a garage, they could have gone back and asked for uh, additional coverage to do some of this other stuff and probably gotten it. So, from my perspective, I appreciate, because I, I live in a neighborhood where houses are close together, so I appreciate the problem. But I'm not convinced yet, uh, based on what I've heard, so I'm still in favor of granting the permit.
Anyone else on the board? Jim, you don't want to say anything? You looked for a second like you wanted to say something.
Yeah, he's been, he's been awfully quiet.
I know.
I'm trying to see if I'm even on my, I'm not on mute.
Um, no, you're not.
I mean, I guess, I guess I just had a question, which is, the, the original building permit, did it even predate the time of the town meeting?
Um, of the ADU.
Yeah.
Elizabeth, you know? You mean, was it even an option to apply for an ADU when they originally applied?
Uh, I think they were, I think, I think the, no, I think the, uh, somebody said that, I think Elizabeth said that the, the ADA was passed in, would have been town meeting in twenty twenty?
September.
That's when the town meeting was?
Yeah.
For this one, okay. Well, building permit looks like it may have been issued around September three.
We, we weren't aware of the new law yet, so.
Yeah, I know, I think, I think it's a good point.
I think they just go, that only goes to me, that it goes just further to the, the other situation, which is that, um, you know, people, you know, people do a variety of things, right? And they, they do building permits to, to do stuff, whatever it is. But I think in this particular case, when this is being planned and thought about and all that, it's likely that this wasn't even an option. And as is noted, it's a situation where the building permit itself wasn't going to raise a public hearing or any of those sorts of things, so. Um, we, we've had situations where people expanded their house on a non-conforming lot to forty-nine percent of whatever the size was, and then five years later, somebody came in and it's still non-conforming, and, you know, if he gives, as long as you get beyond the number of years or whatever, you can expand it further. I mean, I, I just think that, that time passes on. Um, I would like to hope that one of the functions of these meetings, so I, I guess I would say that I agree with like Tom's analysis that, um, there's no legal reason to, um, that, or reason under our bylaw not to grant this particular thing. I do think that one of the functions of this, um, these kinds of hearings is to sometimes just allow information to pass, and I've heard a couple of things, including, um, you know, willingness on the part of the applicants to reduce some of the light and some thoughts about um, additional vegetation, et cetera, that might help the situation, so I'm, I would just be, I don't know that what we can require, but, or not, but I would just be hopeful that that sort of interchange could lead to some additional mitigation factors that would help in this situation.
But Jim, I agree with you. Um, to that point, um, let me ask Elizabeth, what, what are your thoughts on some conditions that might help with some mitigation here?
Um, so the board has, um, in the past on similar projects, um, provided, you know, conditioned projects that the applicant put in, you know, either, you know, a hedge or, um, a fence to, to screen and help, um, screen and buffer a project, um, you know, for, for this application. The side with the closest, the, um, closes of butter, you know, there's the two smaller windows up in the residential portion, but you, you know, you have the garage doors, and so the board can, um, incorporate a condition that the applicant install um, either a hedge or a fence from the edge of the existing hedge to the end of the garage, it's approximately thirty feet. I would leave it up to the applicant to, to decide how they, and work with the property owners on how they want to do that, um. They can install a hedge. If they wanted to choose a fence, they'd have to go to the HDC to get approval for that, so I'd leave it up to um, the applicant to work with the butters on what type of, um, screening they would like to see. But that, it can be, and the board has done in the past, um, incorporated a condition in that manner.
So a hedge doesn't require any HDC approval and can.
No, it does not.
Done. Let me ask the applicant, what are your thoughts on that, on a hedge?
Uh, the problem with the hedge is it won't, uh, solve the problem that the Concretes are worried about. There already is a fence. And, uh, you know, I guess my initial question for the Concretes, if they were this worried about it, they just put in a lot of landscaping and some trees. Had they been this concerned about it, why didn't they put in the arbor bodies? Because the trees they put in uh, le- lose their leaves in the winter, and so it doesn't appear that they were that concerned about it at the time.
Okay, I, I mean, I don't want to get.
I don't think that's a healthy, um, conversation for the board to get into, um, that discussion. If there is already a, um, fence along that property line, um, you know, a, a fence is only, you know, six feet in height, uh, um, a hedge can grow higher than six feet, uh, so it is, it's up to the board to discuss whether they feel something more than a fence, um. I'm just looking at the aerial photo, I don't, you know, I can't see a fence.
I would be against that. I, I would be against, I would be against requiring that because the living quarters are going to be on the second floor. We're not talking about a ground floor living, uh, situation, so when you start talking about having to go up, let me think, it'd be probably ten feet, twelve, twelve, at least twelve feet, if not more. Uh, and then the fourth, yeah, you'd have to go up fifteen or sixteen, eighteen feet, I believe, to even begin to reach the windows on that second floor, and I, that to me doesn't make sense here.
Well, that, that wouldn't be permitted. A, uh, you, you would not be able to, one, install a fence that high.
Oh, no, right, and nor do I think you ought to ask for it. I, I agree with that, I agree with it, uh, and I don't think you would want, I don't think it's fair to ask to have trees or hedges put in, they're going to get up to fifteen, twenty, or thirty feet there, may not make sense.
Tom, is there anything you think it is fair to ask? A part of me thinks, this is, this is what Jim said, the exchange of information, if we can do something, and part of me thinks that it, it's private property, and if there's a light on, there's a light on, and that, that's maybe disrespectful to the neighbors, but I don't know what we can, how far we can push our, you know, mitigation ma- measures.
This, this is, this would be a great, uh, case for a class, because compliance, when you have a fifteen foot setback requirement, which I believe that's what's applicable here, that we're, we are always, and Jim and you have been on the board a long time, that becomes a constant problem when the setbacks are quite small relative to what a neighbor would like. And all of a sudden, gosh, something goes in, it's in compliance, and, but it's not, nobody's happy about it. And I think there's some of that here, and so that's why I'm uneasy about requiring the applicant to do more than they want to do or that they haven't, that they've done. And I think Jim's correct, the applicant hopefully has heard what the neighbors have said and what Jim has said, and they may go back and say, hey, we can do these things or those things and do them, but, uh, but to require, uh, at the moment at least, that's not where I would go.
I, I agree with that.
Yeah.
Theo.
Same, no, same. I, I, I agree with that too.
Listen, I have neighbors who have their lights on. I don't like it, uh, but it's the neighborhood I live in and I have neighbors, you know, and so, uh, not to be flippant about it, but I, I think there is a line, and I think this would be allowed. If, if we had started at the, at the beginning, I, I don't think there would have been any issue, and I think that we heard the neighbors, we went out and we did additional investigation because of what the neighbor said, and now I'm back to what Tom said, where I had not heard anything that would say not to approve this.
And, and, and again, at seven hundred and fifty square feet, there would still be a light on. Right.
We can't regulate everything that happens.
Right, right, not right, even, but, you know, if, if they would have had a seven hundred and fifty square foot dwelling unit, the lights would still be on, and, and we, we could not, you know, we can't regulate that.
Right, exactly. So do me a favor, let's, Haley, can you just bring up an elevation, so we talk about what, so we can just see exactly what we're talking about in terms of those windows?
Uh, Haley, I have it.
Okay, so the windows, uh, so the Concretes are talking about are.
Are, uh, these windows right here.
Right.
Um, and um, the applicant can can confirm for me, this line right here, I believe, is I need my glasses.
That's the floor line.
Floor line, yes.
So the sill is up high. When you're sitting, you really don't see, um, anything except sky, so.
Did you say we're getting blinds? I mean, not that I can.
Yes, well, not.
I assume you don't want to have this argument either, so.
I am, that we've, the curtains have arrived, I haven't put them up. Um, they are light filtering curtains, but I thought from, um, what the Concretes have expressed, the light isn't as important as the view, and I figured if we had light filtering curtains, there would be, you know, more opportunity or more incentive to have them closed during the day for privacy. So, that's, you know, we can talk about that, though, with the neighbors.
Okay, so it's things like that where I think Jim is exactly right. We've had an exchange of information, and you have done something proactive to try to help. It may not be enough for the neighbors not, you know, to be happy about it, but I, I, I'm satisfied that we pushed it about as far as we should. Um, don't know what the other board members think.
Uh, could I just ask Paul a technical question? The, the application form has a checkmark for a special permit and a checkmark for variance. There's no variance involved here, is there?
No. No, very. Thank, thank you.
Theo, Tom, do you feel like we've, um, kind of exhausted this discussion?
Yes.
Can I get a motion?
That's you, Tom.
Okay, um, I move that the application of Julia Minor and John Caldwell for property of three ninety-nine Laurel Road to, uh, be permitted to add an accessory dwelling unit pursuant, pursuant to section four point two, point two, point two, be granted, subject to the conditions contained in the planning board's, uh, recommendation.
Thank you.
All in favor? Mr. Swaim?
Yes.
Mr. Kindermans?
I.
Ms. Akers-Moore?
I.
That being said, I hope, you know, that you guys can be neighborly somehow.
So too.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Have a good night.
Thanks, you too.
Um, and for the board, I think we've done everything else we needed to do, so, uh, not totally bad time here before eight thirty. Um, anyone have anything else?
I just asked, the, uh, on the Concord Academy, we haven't, I thought we had approved that.
You did.
Yeah, we did. It was, it was because of the conversation we had, and I'll take credit or blame, whatever it is, for pushing it along with Theo, that we had kind of said, why wasn't there a third party review done of this, and we.
Right.
So, that, that Elizabeth was proactive, and for this next Concord Art application has gone out and solicited bids for that independent review to be done, so that.
So, so what would have, let's assume, let's assume that review came in and, and we'll, and make an assumption, it's very negative, we didn't like it, what, so what happens?
No, this is for the Cock, we haven't heard the application. It's for Concord Art, not Concord Academy.
Oh, 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 I'm sorry. I thought you were talking Concord Academy.
No. Yeah, yeah, no, no, it's moving forward to a different, we're just being proactive because Elizabeth knows that Theo and I are going to be sticks in the mud about it, so.
Okay.
I, I won't be sticking the mud because I won't be here.
Well, Theo won't, but I'll be a stick in the mud on his behalf while he's not here, so thanks for doing that, appreciate it.
Another question, does anybody know what the status of the litigation is on the Highland Avenue property?
Um, oh, you mean, you mean fourteen forty, fourteen fifty Main Street?
Yeah.
Yeah, what is?
Um, there, there, there is no update.
It's been a long time, huh?
It, it sure has, um. Yeah, it's, we, we haven't heard a thing.
Okay.
All right.
Sometimes no news is good news.
Sometimes.
Right, well, Jim, sorry that you're so excited to leave us, but we'll, um, we have you for, for a little while longer.
Yeah, I'm bummed. I think that, I, I was, I did this, I, so I got on the, I've spent, I was six years on the planning board, four years on the finance committee, nine years on the Public Works Commission, which I served the last three as a holdover appointment because I couldn't find anybody to do it. Um, this will be seven years, I think, here. Um, one is an associate member and three, so I'm, you know.
Yeah, you've done your time.
So you, you do know you can't go off until you find at least one other person to become an associate member, right?
Yeah, well, I don't think it quite works that way.
Yeah, dang it.
You sit around too long.
But I was trying to give plenty of notice. I'd be happy to talk to anybody about what a good gig it is.
Okay, well, just, so, just so for all the board members, um, you do already have a vacant associate member position already, so, um, if everybody can start talking, talking to people and see if you can drum up the interest, um, that would be in your best interest because you will quickly have quorum issues.
Yes, it's the downside of Concord's terrific rule of limiting terms on all of these.
Well, that's, that is actually, um, we are finding out that is, um, that may not be entirely true, and it may be something that will be revisited.
Before April thirtieth?
Yeah, right.
Probably not by April thirtieth.
People have to agree to do these things.
Yeah, yeah, right. Ripped it into the zoning board.
I, I have, I have found that, that five, I personally, I've found that sort of five or six, seven years is actually quite nice. You get to know what's going on, you get to have an impact, and then by the time you start not wanting to listen to the, all the arguments, because you've heard them ninety-five thousand times before, you're gone, and you don't have a negative attitude, bro.
I can see, I can absolutely see that. So will one of these guys, would, um, Robbie or Tom move into the member position, and then we.
It'd be Rob, it'd be Robbie, wouldn't it? Because he was on before I was.
Um, unless he has some aversion or reason why he does not want to be a full member.
No, he has no reason, he's fine.
Okay.
Thrilled. Um, all right, well.
All right.
Thanks, everyone. Thanks for all your help, and we'll see you in February.
Everybody.
Or some of you. Bye.
Bye.
Elizabeth, you're going to adjourn the meeting at eight thirty-one?
I absolutely am, yes.
All right, thank you.
Bye.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Bye-bye.